It's nine o'clock. We'll call to Tuesday, May 22, 2018, Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Rule call will show that all commissioners, except Commissioner Persky, are present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is there anyone here to speak at the public access forum? Anyone that's wishing to address the board on issues not found on today's agenda may do so at this time. Speakers are asked to approach the microphone. Individual comments are limited to three to four minutes. Total allotted time for this forum is ten minutes. A citizen may speak at the public access forum once per month. And county board members will not engage in dialogue with the speakers, but rather refer the matter to the appropriate county department. So please give your name and address, please.
Judy Evelyn Adams, 413 Fifth Avenue Northeast, Melrose, Minnesota, 56352. And if I might approach the bench and just have a handout?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Just give them to me, I'll kick them down there.
Perfect.
They can go back and talk.
I need one for Persky anyway. I'm handing out a letter from the county treasurer, basically looking at a month from now bringing an issue to the board for approval, for me to repurchase a piece of property that went into tax forfeiture. And so I've included his letter. He's asking me by tomorrow to submit $21,000 to bring this to the board next month. And I already had put down $10,240 to stop the forfeiture. It wasn't in my name at the time because I sold this mobile home park in Melrose to my attorney. Since then, my attorney, Mr. John Bonner, was convicted of a felony, is currently disbarred, and I'm actually still in the courts with him. And I would like to ask the county to review this matter and look at a moratorium on this, putting this property up for sheriff's sale. I am in the appeals process right now and waiting for an answer to my brief, which is due still this month. And it's possible, if he would appeal, if I win, then it could go out longer if he appealed to the Supreme Court. So possibly a year moratorium would be needed to prevent the sale of this property. So I've included a letter that I wrote to Commissioner Notch through email last week. And basically, the upshot is that I was in Stearns County court for six years and could not get put under oath to tell my story. There are lots of problems with the court system, and I am offering my services to the county to come up with a task force to review how to correct some of the problems that I had in not even being able to get an evidentiary hearing on this case. So basically, that's the upshot. My attorney was actually quitclaim my property and then never, basically, paid me. And so during that time, he didn't pay the taxes. And the county, during a proceeding subsequent, allowed him to not pay the taxes when registering the new deeds. And that allowed him to work, use government to, basically, put me in a position where the property went to tax forfeiture. When he was supposed to convey the property back to me, he did not, because the county Torrance Examiner refused to file and record my liens on the property and a list pendants. So then, he was able to remortgage the property and not invite me to a closing. And a year later, I received a letter that it was in tax forfeiture with the final notices. So I am working with the treasurer on this, but he has not credited me the money that I put down to make an installment on the installment agreement at the time in 2014. And because it wasn't in my name yet, because I wasn't given the deeds, at this point, he's not giving me the credit of the $10,000 I've already paid. So there's several issues here. And, you know, in reading the mission statement, you know, I am asking for the county to look into this case, to create some accountability, to eliminate the disparity that I have suffered because of this crook using the county, using all the county's facilities to undermine my ownership of this property. So that's my three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where do we?
I'm sorry I didn't get to see Mr. Persky, but I did run against, he ran against me for Congress. And I'm currently running for the third time again for the Bachmann's old seat. So wish me luck, and thank you, and I hope to be back next month, and hopefully hear from the treasurer's office. Steve, appreciate, or Steve, Steve, appreciate a response back. Thanks. Okay.
I'll have to reach out to the auditor's office and see where they're at. This is a longstanding case. There are lots of different wrinkles that have been involved for several years, as you kind of alluded to in your statement. And so I'll try to see where we're at in the auditor's office and reach out to commissioners and let you know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for the public access forum? Please approach a microphone, give your name and address.
My name's Gary Weber, my wife Lynn. We currently live in Elk River at 1943 Auburn Street Northwest. We're in the process of building a home at 33, excuse me, 33319 Sand Hill Circle in Albany. And we just wanted to come and thank the Environmental Services Group for all the assistance that they provided our process here. When we first started looking at the land, there were a number of issues. And because of their information, timely information, and all the good services both Jamie and Angie and her whole crew provided us, we were able to overcome a lot of the obstacles and get some good information so we could make logical decisions in regards to purchasing his house and eventually building a property. So we just wanted to say thank you to that whole environmental staff.
They were fantastic. You don't have a better team. We appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley, did you get that noted?
Thank you, Grandpa. We appreciate that.
Is there anyone else here for the public access forum? Anyone else for the public access forum? Third time, anyone? Seeing no one, we will proceed to the consent agenda, item B. Board, what are your wishes?
I'll move the consent items.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll recess the regular county board meeting and conduct the human services board meeting. And we have Melissa Huberty here for, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair of Commissioners. My name is Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator. And on today's agenda, I just have three consent items. They are item number C1, C2, and C3, on pages 21 through 27. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
Board members?
I'll move the Human Services Board consent items.
Is there a second?
I can second, yeah.
Moved and seconded. Any questions of Melissa, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will close the Human Services Board meeting and reconvene the regular board meeting. We have item D, Tri-County Action Program. Lori Schultz?
You can come up and sit. Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. I am Lori Schultz, the Executive Director of TRICAP. And I'm here today just to take a few minutes to talk about TRICAP and the services that we offer in Stearns County. And so I'll just share a little bit. So TRICAP, we were incorporated back in 1965. So we've been providing services to the counties of primarily Stearns, Benton, and Sherburne. Since there, we offer an array of different services, all towards helping people meet their basic needs. In your board packet, there is two sheets that I provided for you as well. We have 80 staff between the counties that we serve. And as I talked about, we offer an array of different services. It's hard sometimes to wrap your arms around everything we do, because we do so many different things. I'll just highlight some of the programs that we currently operate and talk about specifically the numbers served in Stearns County. So by far, our largest program is, we administer the Energy Assistance Program, which is a program that assists people with meeting their, helping meet their heating needs, whether it's paying for primary heat, replacing or fixing their furnace, or providing crisis assistance if they have a fuel shut off or they're out of propane. In Stearns County, last year, we provided that service to over 3,000 people. Our second largest program is our transportation services. We are the public transit provider for Stearns County, with the exception of the city of St. Cloud. And so we currently have nine buses that operate out of Stearns County. We own a transit facility in the city of Sauk Center, in which we provide public transportation services to anybody who would like a ride. And we offer those in Sauk Center, Melrose, Albany, and Holdingford, as well as we provide services within the 10-mile radius of our Wade Park Transit Facility. So last year, we provided over 60,000 transportation rides for Stearns County residents. One of our other larger programs that we operate is a tax assistance program. And last year, we assisted in Stearns County a little under 1,000 people. That is where we have tax clinics that are set up. In St. Cloud, we have them at Catholic Charities, and we also have one at the St. Cloud Technical and Community College, and we have one in the Coal Spring area, where we utilize over 100 volunteers that take their time to prepare taxes for people who are income-eligible. Some of our other programs that we operate are self-sufficiency programs geared towards helping people meet their basic needs and fulfill the goals that they have to be self-reliant. That could be households that have a displaced homemaker in their house. And what that means is, for whatever reason, whether it was death, or disability, or divorce, the primary wage earner left the home. And so now, that current adult needs to get back into the workforce. We provide the case management services, support services, to help them get back into the workforce. We also have an asset development program that helps people attain assets, whether it's to purchase a home for the first time, pursue a higher education, or start or expand a small business. It's one of my favorite programs at TRICAP, because it's a matched program in which people have earned income that goes into a savings account, and then we match that three to one. And they save for two years to attain their goal. We know that the more people can build their assets, the more likely that they will stay out of poverty. So that's another, you know, flavor of a different type of a program we have. We also assist with educational programs by providing renting 101 classes to people who, maybe it's their first time renting, and they're not sure quite how to understand their lease, or maybe they don't understand their rights and responsibilities. So we talk about those different aspects. We partner with legal services, who brings in an attorney, who speaks with the participants as well. We also do some basic budget counseling and education information with them. And then we also have financial literacy classes that we offer in the community. And that, again, is another course that's for people, just to help them learn about how to take control of their finances, how to establish a budget, keep a budget, how to stretch their dollars. We also have a weatherization program that helps families who have their own homes, help them be more energy efficient. And so we have auditors that go into those homes and look at where is their gaps in their efficiencies. So we do insulation, bypass ceiling. We look at all of the mechanical features of the home, including the furnace, the hot water heater. And we provide that education as well, so that it lowers their heating bills for years to come. So again, those are just some of the programs that we operate. We are governed, I failed to mention this in the beginning, we're governed by a tripartite Board of Directors, which is one-third public elected officials, one-third community members, and one-third consumers. So people that actually are income-eligible and are receiving our services. In Stearns County, we currently have Commissioner Notch and Commissioner Merrick that serve on our board. So thank you very much to those two individuals for giving their time to help govern the organization. So I talked a little bit about what types of services we have. I'll just share a few of the statistics that I provided on who are the people that we're serving, and that is in your packet. So 58% of the households that we served last year in Stearns County were one-person households. Many of them are seniors and people with disabilities. 13% were between the ages of 55 and 69, with 9% being over the age of 70. 68% of the population served last year in Stearns County were white, with 22% being black or African-American, as reported. And this is a staggering number for me, this next one. 73% of the people that we served in Stearns County last year had a high school diploma or greater. So the people that we are serving are working. They just simply do not make enough money to meet their basic needs. The other component that I like to share when I talk about TRICAP is the economic impact that TRICAP has to the community, and that's the second handout that I had provided. So last year, from the services that TRICAP provided in Stearns County alone, over $5 million went back to the community, the largest area, of course, in funds generated by the Tax Preparation Program. So over $2 million in tax returns came back from the people in Stearns County that filed their taxes with us. And $1.7 million came back to local energy vendors, excuse me. It could be the large utility companies, but it's also the small utility companies, the moms and pop shops, as I like to say, that have a very small business that are selling propane and other types of heating fuel assistance. Some of our other contractors that we work with that help the economic impact is local plumbers, local furnace repair shops, the gas stations where we fuel all of our buses, the repair shops that we take all of our buses to to get fixed, local landlords in which we provide rental assistance to some clients, as well as other areas. And so not only are we providing essential services to the residents in Stearns County, but we're also helping to make the economic impact to our community greater as well. So with that, I'll ask if there's any questions, and I do thank you for your time today.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Laurie, for your report. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the funding sources, where TRICAP gets money from?
Sure.
And then, I'll wait till you answer that.
Okay. So last year, TRICAP's annual revenue for all the services that we operate was $7.5 million. Of that, roughly about $5.6 million is federal and state funding. So the majority of our funding comes from federal and state grants. We also have funding that comes locally from Otto Bremer Foundation, United Way, We also have funding that comes locally from Otto Bremer Foundation, United Way, a small portion from county assistance. And then we also have fee-for-services. So we are a public transit provider, so that means there's no income eligibility to it. Anybody wants to ride their bus, our bus for a dollar twenty-five, they can. So we have the fees for services that we collect on that as well.
And then what is the greatest need, one or two or three things that TRICAP has? If you could tell the public, this is what we need most, what is it?
Certainly. Every three years, we do a comprehensive needs assessment. The three greatest areas, and they have been consistent over the last ten years, is first and foremost affordable housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, there's many definitions that people use. Affordable housing for us means that people are actually able to afford it. It's not always about, is there vacancies? It's about, can the people afford the amount of rent that there is? And the majority of people that report to us are rent-burden, meaning they are paying more than fifty percent of their income towards their rent. Where, when you look at what would be ideal, it would be thirty to thirty-five percent. Second-greatest need is transportation. And transportation of all sorts. There's public transportation that meets the needs, but it doesn't meet the needs of all areas. It's not efficient to take a bus that can hold twenty-five people and drive it fifteen miles out into a rural area to pick up one person. And so there's different modes of transportation that are needed to get people to and from where they need to go. The third area that we see is just simply basic needs. Bringing it all together, so people have enough to pay for their rent, their childcare if they have it, their transportation, their health insurance, their food. A lot of the people that we operate are robbing Peter to pay Paul. They're paying their rent, but then something else is suffering. So what I like to say, that their biggest need is just enough money to provide for their basic needs.
There may be some individuals listening to you that say, well, we have a Human Services Department, why do we need TRICAP?
While we serve similar clientele, there is a large percentage of the people, like I said, that are working, and their incomes don't qualify for the different types of services that Stearns County or any other human services agency offers. They're over the income limits, it may just be a little bit. And so some of the services complement: childcare assistance, SNAP benefits, medical assistance sometimes. But most of the time, it's because they don't qualify for those programs.
Okay, one of the slides here shows that in 2016-17, TRICAP served seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight residents. Is there something out there that encourages individuals that have had services there to get back to you, five years later, ten years later, you know, that they've benefited from it? Do you ever, is there some process out there that encourages that type of feedback?
In some of our programs, we do have that evaluation mechanism. That's a part of it, where we do follow-up with them, especially in our housing programs, where we see, are they still housed six months after we assist them, a year after we assist them? But for some of our larger programs, for example, like transportation, that's a program that is just like Metro Bus. It's not for the low income, and if anything, we'd like to see that program grow and see more people in the community using public transportation instead of their own vehicles. So in that sense, we just know we continue to grow, and that's a good thing. With energy assistance, I think it's important to note that that is a program that is not geared towards, the focus isn't about ensuring that they're not on energy assistance next year. It's a program that's focused on making sure that Minnesotans have a safe, reliable home with heating. And so over seventy percent of the people that we served in that program last year were people that are seniors or people with disabilities. If their income doesn't change, if their social security, for example, doesn't change, they're on fixed incomes, they're still going to need that energy assistance in five years, as long as they're still in their home, which we know, from statistics, it's much more financially efficient to keep seniors in their homes. And so for those types of programs, Commissioner Merrick, we don't collect that type of data.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are up to Item E, which is parks. Ben Anderson here? There's one item on the agenda. Morning, Ben.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Yes, I have the one item. It's in regards to Lake Huronis Regional Park. This is a unique park in our system in that it is managed by both Meeker and Stearns County. But Meeker County handles all of the day-to-day operations, and Stearns County pays for half of the annual operations costs. In order for, I mean, as we all know, parks and trails have needs for updating park shelters, restroom facilities, things like that. In order for a park or trail to be eligible for legacy funding, they need to be first designated as a regionally significant park by the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. And in front of you, there is a resolution that would support a designation application to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission to try and get Lake Huronis Regional Park designated as a regional facility for this legacy funding.
Commissioners?
I'll move, I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question. So even if you get the, even if the application is successful, it still comes back here for acceptance?
We could do that, as regionally, but that doesn't, if it gets designated as regionally significant,
Yeah.
that just means that it's eligible for the legacy funds. There would still be an application process to be, if we wanted to go for grant money.
Yeah, we get another cut at the apple. That's all I'm trying to establish. Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All right. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Very good. I just have one miscellaneous item quick, sorry about that. I just wanted to mention that on June sixteenth, we will be celebrating Quarry Park's twentieth anniversary. It'll be a free day, no parking, will be charged at the park. We're gonna have activities running from ten a.m. until two p.m. We're gonna have a rock-climbing wall out there. High Coppers is going to do a park escape, which is a kind of scavenger-type hunt, solving puzzles as you go throughout the trails. The Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District is gonna be doing, they're doing some wetland conservation education. And then also, there'll be some mammal furs and activities there as well. So the public is welcome to come and join us for a free day at Quarry Park on June sixteenth.
That's a Saturday, right?
That's a Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
We are up to Public Works. And I believe we have Jeff Miller here today, instead of Jody Type.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first item is to ask for approval to authorize final payment for our 2017 resurfacing contract. This contract was funded with a combination of wheelage tax, county levy, and county bonding funds. There was a very slight overrun in the bituminous patch, which is funded by the maintenance budget and was well within their budget for that. So I'm asking the Board to approve the final payment for the 2017 resurfacing contract.
Move approval.
Ben moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item number two, sale of excess right-of-way.
Next item is to ask the Board to authorize the sale of excess CASA eighty-five right-of-way to the Painesville Historical Society. There was one bidder, which was the Historical Society, with a minimum bid of fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty dollars. And the Highway Department will work with auditor's staff to draft the necessary deeds.
I'll move to authorization of the sale.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And my next item is to ask for approval of awarding the contract for our SAP zero-seven-three-six-one-seven-zero-four-zero, which is our CASA seventeen improvements in the city of Holdingford. Project will be funded with a combination of state aid, construction, and county levy funds. And I believe you have your, the result of the bids in your packet. Ask the Board to authorize awarding the contract to Knife River Corporation.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And my last item is to ask the Board to adopt resolution requesting a speed study along our CASA fifty-four on the west side of Avon. There've been a number of complaints related to the fifty-five mile-per-hour speed limit with all the new development that's taken place along there. The Avon City Council took action in support of having a speed study done. So we're asking the Board to authorize or adopt this resolution for that speed study.
Move approval of the recommended action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And I have no miscellaneous, if you have questions for me.
Anyone have any questions with Jeff? Mr. Merrick?
I have one, well, not a question, but, and I don't know if it's a city responsibility or the county, but at the intersection of Veterans Drive and Eighteenth Street North, as around that corner, there's a couple of big potholes there. So I don't know if that's a city responsibility or a county.
Okay, we can pass that on to the appropriate people.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff. We're up to Item G, which is Sheriff's Department, and we have John Lentz here today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Coming to you this morning to seek authorization to make a grant application for the 2019 DWI Officer Grant. This is a program run by the Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety and financed by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. The grant that we're applying for would run from October first of 2018 through September thirtieth of 2019. The grant cycle is anticipated to be two years, with a application required again next year if we were to continue. The grant would fund one full-time officer and additionally cover up to four-hundred hours of overtime for extended officer enforcement in court. In addition to that, it would cover forty-eight hours of administrative overtime at one of our lieutenant's level. This grant is something that the city of St. Cloud Police Department has had for the last four years and has been very successful with it. They will be applying for the 2019 grant as well, which will be their fifth year in this program. Those eligible for the grant are, have been identified by the Office of Traffic Safety and are the twenty-five counties that have the highest incidence of either death and/or serious injury as a result of drunk driving. So we're seeking authorization to proceed with that grant application, which is due tomorrow by four p.m. And I can entertain any questions from the Board.
Report of any questions. Commissioner Lonsby.
So the grant covers officers, you said, four-hundred hours of overtime. How about the regular, what am I trying to say? Hey, what, you know, do we, is the county expected to pay the officers regular pay?
No, I probably wasn't as clear as I needed to be. It covers one full-time officer for the two-thousand-eighty hours for that grant year, with an additional four-hundred hours of overtime.
Plus some administrative?
Plus some administrative oversight by the lieutenant.
Okay. And what was the court part you're talking about?
Well, the four-hundred hours of overtime would be for, to cover expenses for a shift that might extend beyond the normal hours, and then any court that is a result of enforcement under the grant.
Okay.
Commissioner Notch, did you have a question?
My question was, this the first time Stearns County applied for this?
This is the first time Stearns County has applied for this grant. I believe it's probably the first time that Stearns County has applied for a grant requesting another officer in at least a decade.
Commissioner Merrick?
So this is authorization to apply for the grant? And if the grant is not successful, then this issue goes away?
Then it does. If we were successful in our application, we would come back to the Board for approval.
Okay. And then are there any merits, or would there be merits in joining forces with the city of St. Cloud? I think I understood you saying that the city of St. Cloud is doing the same grant application? Is there merit in joining forces?
The OTS, or Office of Traffic Safety, is gonna require an application from both departments, so.
Okay. And then if you're successful for year one and not year two, then that issue would come back to the Board to either fund that, or that position would be eliminated?
It would. Since the grant ends on September thirtieth, if we weren't successful in 2020, there would be a final quarter that we would have to have an officer carried. Looking towards the future in 2019, we would know by the end of May, first part of June, 2019, whether or not we were successful that second year.
Okay.
Additionally, I do anticipate at least two retirements next year that I could offset those costs with.
So the timing would be such that it could be addressed in the budget cycle, in the budget preparation? Okay. I'll move approval of the request.
I'll second it with an additional question. Is this competitive?
Yes, there's going to be up to fifteen grants awarded and at least twenty-five different agencies that are eligible to apply. So I think we'll get it, we may not.
Okay.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
We're up to Item H, Environmental Services. Shall we add Angie here?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board.
Good morning.
We have a couple of items for you, and I know there are some items on consent. I will have Angie talk through those first.
Good morning.
Morning.
Angie Berg, Environmental Services. And we would ask the Board to pull two items from consent for further discussion. Item number H five, on packet page one-twenty-one. And the reason for pulling this one is we would like to clarify the condition set by the Planning Commission is number one. The condition should read, "The Planning Commission set a date and or event which the IUP would expire, and that the permit is valid until December thirty-first of 2033." We typically like to have the expiration dates coincide with the licensing, and so that's why we're asking to clarify that condition. Would you like me to go on to the second one, or do you want to take action on that one first?
You're both of them.
Okay. The second one we'd ask you to pull is item number H seven, packet page one-fifty-nine. And the purpose for that is Knife River sent us notification the day following the Planning Commission meeting that they have withdrawn their request. So the Board would not need to act on the Planning Commission's decision, basically just accept the withdrawal of the applicant.
What about item number two, was said?
Mr. Chair? Sure. Item number two, that was tabled or continued, depending on when the applicant is able to get us the supplemental information. The Planning Commission had a lot of discussion on this item. The applicant is aware of what he needs to provide for the next meeting. I met with him on Friday.
Okay, so that remains on the consent?
Correct, because the, right, the Board can concur with the Planning Commission's decision on that because you would be concurring with their tabling action. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of the Board?
I'll move approval of consent items with, what'd you said, eight is withdrawn? Or no, number seven, Knife River?
Correct.
Is that right? And then number five, you're coordinating some dates?
Right, it would just be accepting
Okay.
the terminology I stated on that item.
And item number two was, the Planning Commission took no action, and so that's really not before us, and so we just would concur with the Planning Commission, then we'd be okay?
Correct.
Okay, I'll move approval of the consent items with that understanding.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now up to item I, I1.
The next item on the agenda is to consider the Avon Township plat entitled Lupine Meadows. This is a four-lot residential plat submitted by Dan and Marie Bullet of Avon. It's 22 acres located in Avon Township. The property address is 18703 Two Rivers Road. The planning, the township rather, approved both their preliminary and the final plat, as did the Stearns County Planning Commission on February 15th, 2018. Their conditions are listed on packet page 194 and 195, and all conditions have been met.
Mr. Chair, we do have an item, I think you'd asked a question about where does this property fall in relation to shoreland and floodplains? So we have a map showing the shoreland boundary is this blue line going through the plat, and then the floodplain would be the area over here in kind of an orange color. So there is no floodplain in relation to this plat.
Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two.
The next item that I have is a new contract with Tom Kramer, Inc., and Mark Lateral is here in regard to that application.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Before you this morning is consideration to execute a public solid waste service, waste collection, transportation, and delivery contract with Tom Kramer, Inc. of Cold Spring. Tom Kramer, Inc. is currently a licensed solid waste hauler for the collection and transportation of construction, demolition, and industrial wastes. It is their desire to be able to collect, transport, cover mixed municipal solid waste in Stearns County. The county is authorized by Minnesota State's, Minnesota Statute, Chapter 400, to regulate this activity, and because the waste is owned by the county, a contract for the collection, transportation, and delivery is required by Stearns County with each MSW hauler.
What are the board's wishes?
I'll move approval with a question.
I'll second with the question.
Okay, moved and seconded, Mr. Notch.
So is this like regular rotate pickup, or is this like hauling from a transfer station? Or what? It'd be resident, I believe it'd be residential pickup.
I think they're moving into it, I think that was the change, is that, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, that previously they didn't do fixed route hauling, and that's what they're moving into. So that's what they want to add to the service, which is why they needed to change the contract.
Okay.
Commissioner Merrick?
Thank you. Under the comments section, the third last sentence says the county is authorized by Minnesota Statute, Chapter 400, to regulate the activity. Do we have to be concerned about regulate, or is that all in our, in our policy or in the contract and the licensing?
Mr. Chair.
Or do we need to address it now?
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, we do have the authority to do this, and it's just part of what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Lenzmeyer?
I don't know if this helps or hurt the discussion, but Stearns County was relatively unique back in the day in making the claim that the garbage was the county's, the county-owned garbage. And the reason that, and what that allowed the county to do was to regulate solid waste flow to a greater degree and a more specific degree than it could before that. And this was done in a period of time when there were all kinds of challenges to the county's, all county's authority to regulate in this area. And while it was a strange step to take, it worked.
We're ready for a vote here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Unless there's any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item three.
Mr. Chair, Mark Lateral, go through this item as well.
The next item for the board is consideration of approval to authorize Environmental Services to provide with the, to proceed, excuse me, with the abatement and assessment of a septic system upgrade per the resolution 07-32. We had received a request from a property owner located in St. Stephen requesting assistance, financial assistance in abating the non-compliant treatment system at our home. We, the department has already awarded a low-income grant helping to offset the costs of the upgrade, but the balance of the upgrade, which is approximately $8,000 to $14,000, is being requested to be assessed for property taxes through the resolution. This property does have back taxes, but a payment plan with the auditor treasurer can be arranged to allow this to go beyond the one-year payback per the resolution, so.
Board?
I'll move approval of the request. Recommended action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I do have one miscellaneous item for you. Previously, we had a person come to public access for, Mr. Victor Leggett, and what we needed to do is bring back a response to you. His request was to address the nuisance ordinance that the county has, and his belief that the county should be addressing enforcement of the nuisance ordinance under Section 4.2JNK. So in that discussion, or at information, we brought it to the county attorney's office, and the county attorney's office provided a response to me. I put this memo together basically saying, addressing the issue, and the county attorneys have basically said that because it's a township road in between two private landowners, that it's not something that the county will seek enforcement of. So that is not in our area to address under that public nuisance ordinance. I will provide a copy of this response to Mr. Leggett, so he has that as well, but I wanted to bring it to you first before I provide that to Mr. Leggett.
What is Brockway Township's attorney going to say about this?
That I am unsure of. He, I know they're under, currently in litigation at this time between the private parties, so I don't know how the township attorney will be addressing it, but they do have a nuisance ordinance as well.
Mr. Notch?
So Shelley, is that a, that's a private ditch or a public ditch?
I believe that would be considered a private ditch, not a public ditch.
Okay.
And it's the water, it's crossing between one private landowner to another private landowner, and the township road is in between, and then, yeah, there's a culvert and some other things that are transpiring.
But if that be a public ditch, it'd be probably a different matter.
I think if it was a public ditch or a public waterway, we would be having a different conversation. Whether we would do enforcement, I'm unsure, but in this particular case, it would certainly bring out different characteristics.
Because then I'm sure you'd get to your as-built and all these other requirements.
Right.
Public water.
If it was public, yeah, right, we would have more information on that.
So as a private ditch, it's not.
Private conveyance of water, yeah. It's certainly not anything that we would typically take up.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
And that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, should we proceed, or should we take a break?
I'm okay.
Okay. We have the auditor treasurer here, then item number, item J, Steve Holt House and Chad Martini.
Good morning, Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Good morning.
What we have today is an update on our tax forfeiture for 2017. And a motion to do the distribution at the end. I have with me today is Chad Martini and Steve Holt House, they'll go through the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Steve, do you want to lead us through the details? Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Morning.
Just to recap some of the history here of the market and the trends that we're seeing, as you can see, we had our, in 2011, we had a massive forfeiture year going through 2013, and now we're back to the normal years where we're getting that 30, 50 marks as far as our forfeited properties. We still have 119 with all these sales remaining. We have, our main areas are in Cold Spring, Albany, Avon, and St. Cloud, and the rest are kind of scattered throughout the colony.
Is that 119 available right now, or is that 119 total in various periods of time that they become eligible?
119 is still what is remaining for sale over the counter.
No.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Are those vacant properties, or are there buildings or homes?
These are all vacant properties.
Thank you.
Back in 2014, we had discussion regarding the monthly payment plans that have been very successful, and you can see our numbers that we are working with the public, trying to keep them on track, trying to keep them to a three-year payment plan, and it's been very successful. We have very few insufficient funds this way. We're pulling directly from their, an account. So the trends are that people can sustain this monthly-type payment versus that annual installment with the state confession and judgment plans. The 2018 properties for demolition, and what we're seeing here with, with the forfeiture process is we're seeing more buildings that are in desperate need of attention, need to be demolished, just cleanups. So a couple examples here, we have a city of Bruton commercial property that you can see, there's a number of holes in the roof that have been vacant for a number of years here. So that one will be one of the demolitions that we're preparing for right now. We have a couple in Sock Center that we're looking at, just homes that, and what we're seeing is the vacant homes. We're trying to act with the cities and some of the local governments to get a jump on this where we can board them up and get ahead of the game, so that when we do get them, they won't be in such poor condition at least. And we have City Painesville, City Way Park, just some other projects that we have going on right now.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yeah, just clarification, when I asked if these properties are vacant, so there's some with buildings on and some are just raw land, is that?
Yeah, so with the current inventory, with 119 on that slide, that was all the vacant land that was for sale. Right now, these aren't properties that are up for sale.
Okay.
We're gonna have to go through, we've gone out for bids on them.
Okay.
We have to look for asbestos, we have some chemicals on some of, in the commercial building that we have to deal with, so.
So if I can put it in my own words, 119 was just raw land, there are no buildings on those properties?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and those are, you could buy right now over the counter.
Okay.
These properties are going to be on the auction coming in June, so.
Thank you.
Okay, these properties that are going to be on the auction is, are we gonna have to go through the demolition process first?
Yeah.
And then they go on the?
Correct, yeah, so some may not actually get done, but we're trying to get them done for the auction.
Just looking ahead to, we've actually contacted some of the cities regarding the properties that are gonna forfeit this fall. There are 57 properties currently on the list, 37 with structures. We have one farm, one commercial, and 35 residential properties that we're reaching out to. We have continued to send mailings, gotten a number of them on payment plans, but we're continuing trying to work with the public on this.
So this looks like some big numbers, especially the properties with structures. Well, that'll come down to at least half of that. You know, people will start paying, and that's where we're kind of the beginning of the forfeiture process, so that number will come down.
Even leading up to the June 12th tax forfeit auction of this year, you know, even this week, we're still removing properties from the list because, you know, repurchases or, you know, different things. So even, you know, leading up to the weeks before the auction, you know, tax forfeit properties are still dropping off. You know, part of that is action by staff to continually try to follow up and work with people to find options. And here are some statistics of our past years. You can see the revenue has been relatively positive. We can, we are gonna see a trend where those numbers go down, though, and we're gonna see that our expenses are going to go up. So at some point, we'll have to deal with the fund and possibly a negative balance at some point.
And how often, does this, does the statute or does the practice, so internal practice you folks operate under, how often do you have to, I would, a good term I'd think of would be reconcile proceeds? My point is, is that if you have to do that annually, or do you have to?
Yeah, a couple more slides from here, we'll talk about the settlement where we pay the jurisdictions. So we do that annually. The first cost that come out, and Steve will show it on the slide, is our administrative costs. So the costs take down the buildings and any administration. And then the special assessments come out after that, and what we're seeing is less left after that. So once our expenses end, special assessments are paid, especially in the future, there'll be a smaller pot. And a number of years ago, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you recognized this, and we have some money held back.
Yeah, that's just the point I was getting to. I could see that, I was wondering if there had a provision for that, because I could see if you have to do this annually and you have to do it to the penny, there'd be years that'd be a real loser for the county.
Right.
Because removing contaminated structures is nosebleed expensive in some cases.
You're exactly right, and we're, we're again gonna recommend the same $200,000, and our revenue stream is still pretty good, but it's possible next year we'll ask to have that increased, but for now, we think that's a sufficient fund, so.
Okay, so if it comes to pass that we have to, what, hold some of that back? We have the authority to do that?
You do, yes.
Oh, okay.
All right, so our 2017 expenses of $148,788.9 cents, most of that is professional contractual, sorry, regarding some of the demolitions last year, and property cleanups that we had to go through. And our 2017 revenue, approximately a little bit over 1.5 million. Just to reiterate, the distribution of proceeds by state statute, our county administrative expenses come off the top, special assessments, levied against the tax bills, any future assessments, county parks, 20%, and the remainder to be divided out equally there. So I guess we're looking for a motion today to request the distribution to withhold $200,000 for projected property cleanups.
Do we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are up to item K, which is issues by Commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I was anticipating at today's meeting to give the board a report on the royal wedding, but I haven't completed. but I haven't completed my notes yet, so that'll have to be deferred to a future meeting.
I like that, good one.
Commissioner Notch?
Just a couple things, reminder, breakfast on the farm is June second. Seven thirty to twelve thirty at the Volk Dairy Farm, which is southwest of Sock Center.
And parking is?
And parking is at the county fairgrounds in Sock Center, and it'll be shuttle bussing you from the fairground parking lot to the farm.
And hours?
Hours again, from seven thirty AM till twelve thirty PM. And then I just had one more comment. I received a call from a rural business owner, and it's in regards to broadband reach again. And, you know, I know it's an ongoing struggle, and hopefully somewhere down the road, this whole broadband situation can improve, so these rural businesses can hopefully expand, grow, and compete with everyone else, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrick?
Yeah, I'd like to just reemphasize the broadband issue that Commissioner Notch brought up. The dairy advisory meeting that I was at a couple weeks ago, that was brought up just in passing, where's, what is Stearns County doing to help us? And they were concerned about the southwestern part of the county. Northwestern part of the county, I guess, is doing well, but southwestern not. And I know that there's efforts underway, and so maybe an update at some point on the whole broadband would be appropriate. Update to the board? Thank you.
Randy, did you have anything?
No.
Steve? Seeing nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.
Good job. Thank you.